All right, I'm gonna call the Casco Township Org. The organ versus the side of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I welcome everybody. Appreciate you being here this evening. The first thing we have is a consent agenda.
I have an addition. I gave you guys an invoice from the grant time, so that'd be letter I.
Also, we did not receive a bid, a quote from Arlington Construction, so like the...
Delete it?
Yeah, delete it and they get, hopefully get the next one.
So do you want to just move all the letters out of them?
Uh, yeah. Okay, any other corrections or additions or corrections?
Hold on, Joe. I don't know. We might need to add another one. I don't know if this is on the one that we... I think the cemetery fee schedule?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it was on the front of the agenda, but it was in the board cabinet.
Right, yeah.
So we'll add that in on here. Ah, we're deleting, we're deleting this one.
So that would be added.
We're deleting that. And then we're just gonna add in, we're gonna add in the grant time at the end. So whatever, whatever, when we get through it. Sorry.
Okay, all right. Is there any other comments, questions, or additions?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections as noted.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the motions noted. Change of name?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dean, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
All right, first thing we have are citizens' comment. This is a portion of a meeting where residents are allowed to discuss anything. They would like to discuss on the front of the board. There's another citizens' comment further down, so if you don't do it this time, you get it on the second. Okay, does anyone want to add?
Well, I have something. I can be a citizen. I would like to call your attention and offer your thanks to Ms. Kathy Uplager and the women and the gentlemen from the Community Enterprises who made these lovely birdhouses for us to be put up at the township park. A couple months ago, they made backhouses for us, and they do a wonderful job. And they're wonderful people, and Ms. Uplager oversees the whole production. And they put together these things, and they come into our offices with great good spirit to give us these works of art that they've created. So thank you to Mrs. Uplager, and thank you to the Community Enterprises fellowship there. We appreciate it very much. And we'll see that they have a prominent place in the park.
Yeah.
As soon as one of you learns how to climb a ladder.
The congressman who brought a van the other morning there does mean what he wants.
They always do. They're good people. Such nice people.
Okay, anyone else?
Do I identify myself with my address or sign in here just me?
Just names, fine.
Name? Elizabeth Marabate. Just wanted to say that we moved in like the summer of 2019. I've been meaning to come to a meeting since then, and it never seemed to fit our schedules, so I'm glad that we're here today. And the thing that we are interested in learning more about is the Nactris weed ordinance, so I'm hoping that we can get more information about that. So I'm sure you guys already know about it, but I don't know what...
This will be discussed a little bit further down.
Okay, great. Not just your name. Okay, great. Thank you.
William?
For what's your last name again?
Marabate, M-A-R-A-B-A-T-E.
Okay.
M-A-R-A. D-A-T-E.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all right. The next thing is another new business. Tom Wardensson Incorporated set bid for Phase One and Two construction of the Casco Township Bell River Park. Several years ago, Casco Township got 18 acres. We bought it and we voted. We got a DNR grant purchases property. It's right on Fredmore Highway. It goes all the way back to Bell River. We're in the process of development. We applied for two passport grants through the DNR. Those passport grants are whenever you get your license and you elect a passport where you can get into a state park or a DNR boat launch without a fee. Those monies from that go in to a fund in which communities could apply for grants to help develop recreational spaces. We were fortunate. We got two of these passport grants. So we're developing our Phase One and Two of the park, which will be a driveway into the park, a parking lot, handicap, the handicap parking areas and walkways will be paved. There'll be a pad for a porta john. We'll also have a 30 by 60 picnic pavilion. So it's gonna be the front part of the park right up near Fredmore Highway. If you ever got a chance to go by, it's right next to the BP station. So we had two, we had two contractors bid on it. We had Tom Wardenssons and Teltow Contracting. Wardensson beat them out by several thousand dollars, and according to DNR rules, we have to take the lowest bid. But both of these companies, they do very good work. And Mr. Ward would have been here himself, but in addition to being a contractor, he's a farmer, and he's trying to get his corn out of the field before it gets too wet again. Plus, his one partner is ill, and his son is on his honeymoon, so they're...
Good question. You say there were two grants that were issued via DNR for this. What was the dollar value on those two grants?
We're not supposed to have citizens' comments right now. That would be...
Okay, well, the two things we got the DNR, the DNR grants are, the total funds for the project for them would be $200,000 for both of them. Yeah, and the township will contribute $158,000, and the project total is $359,067. So...
I can, I have a little bit of reservation on this, just with how the whole bid process worked. I guess I was a little surprised that I had a bid on my desk before it was in the paper.
Okay.
So that I...
Yeah, what we did that, why we did that is, I kind of, we're kind, I was hoping to do this in July. And then the more Pam and I thought about it, we thought it should go to the paper.
Right.
So that's...
But the bid was on my desk the day that, the morning the paper came out, which it was in the draft box, so...
Yeah, well, the one, it was for, the one, he had bid earlier, and then he just readjusted it.
And that's another concern I have, is once they turn the bids in, shouldn't that stay? A bid is a bid?
No, until the time like the in-cemental date, which was back on the 14th of July, they can modify the bids.
I, like I said, I just, I don't know. I have reservations, but I know we want to get going on the park and whatnot. I just, I...
So the, so the bid that was on your desk on Wednesday morning before the Thursday morning publication?
Before the Wednesday publication.
And that came about how?
He dropped it in the drop box, and it was on my desk, because I don't know.
I retrieved it from the drop.
Yeah, so first thing, 9:00 in the morning, it was already on my desk.
Did someone call him to tell him the parameters of the bid I had to type?
Yeah, no, Pam did. What Pam did is contacted a lot of the local construction companies, and that's how that came about. And on second thought, we decided maybe we should go in the paper just to cover our bases.
Doesn't a bid always have to go in the paper?
Yeah.
Doesn't a bid always have to go in the paper?
Yeah, I don't know. Depending on some of the bids, yeah.
How would they?
But these were in the paper there.
Yeah, I know.
So... Okay. Any questions on the dollar amounts? And all these funds are gonna come on the township end from the Parks and Rec millages that are voted on every four years. So that's where these funds, they won't come from the Township General Fund. And plus, we'll use those funds that we get from the millage for operating costs of the park once it's developed.
I guess in the packet too, we just kind of got the summary from Pam, and I would have liked to have seen the complete bid package from both Wardens and Teltow. I didn't, I didn't get to see them. I know you did, but...
Right, but, I mean, under the DNR rules, we have to take the lowest bidder. We have to have a very compelling reason not to.
So it would just those two people that bid?
Just those two.
But that would put out for some improvements, right? The Teltow had bid on those, and we changed all of that.
On Phase One?
Yeah.
Teltow bid, did the work to bid on Phase One. And then Ms. Blau decided that we would combine Phase One and Phase Two together. So Teltow's bid was then set aside.
Right.
So he didn't, he didn't get any of the bids?
Well, yeah. Pam thought combined the two bids would cut, would save us on costs, on setup costs and other things.
It seems strange.
I think we need to think these things through a little more before we do this. I also don't like, and I understand that when you get involved with government money that isn't ours, that's given to us from a grant, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. I understand that. That's how state government works. But I do not like my hands being tied, telling me that I must accept the lowest bid when it might not be overall advantageous, but that's...
Well, and then looking at, at the summary, it's not comparing apples to apples because the line items, you know, there's some where one of them's really high and the other one's really low. And that opposite, and I know that that is contractor talk. Right.
I know that probably this line, you know, and... But we were not given the opportunity to speak with the contractors about that. I know they could easily explain it to me, but I, not having a contractor's license, was a little confused by the desperate changes.
They, they, their bid, their pricing on the construction drawings that were contained.
But, but we would have a bid, let's say, for yardage, I'm just saying, and one bid would come in at $10.59 per linear yard, and the other one would come in at $49 and something, something. And I know that can be explained because a contractor might say, "I don't have the equipment to do this, and so I have to add in the rental cost."
Right.
However, I don't know that.
Right.
I don't know that.
Right.
And I'm just hoping that our professional was comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and as the line items came down, all right, the one bid was higher than the other, and we have to accept the lower bid. I can understand that. I guess I just don't like having my hands tied.
Well, I mean, we have to, it is...
I know.
$200,000. We're getting help development. I mean, it's better than if we had to do it totally on ourselves, so...
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
One of the strengths of getting $200,000 is that we are bound to accept the lowest bid, even if perhaps we have druthers about some elements.
Well, that lowest bid isn't necessarily the best.
Exactly.
We all know that from experience.
Absolutely, but we sort of have our hands tied.
Yes.
But there again, when you're dealing with the state government, when you're dealing with Parks and Rec, you go by their rules and regulations if you choose to put in for a bid.
We have two more bids that we have on the, we have a second round Sparks Grant to give money to pay the... Right now, the driveway parking lot is A, we'd accept the handicap area, it's open to pay. There's a grant called a Sparks Grant. It's 100%. It's from some of the ARPA money, the COVID money out there. We applied to get it paid, so whether we're successful or not.
Yes, and that's the other thing. I don't mean to sound ungrateful. But in applying for all these grants, and the time it takes to wait to see if we're awarded them, we go year into year. I, I don't want to be selfish in saying I don't think I'm ever gonna live to see. But, but I will. But it's, I'm impatient about this. I have been listening to this park talk for...
Years.
Years now. I have put together and dissolved park people that were more than willing to help. I think they've moved to Shell Township by now to get to where the parks are. And again, I'm not ungrateful. I'm just impatient. I'm sorry.
Well, we also applied for even a bigger grant. It's a development grant to take the road back to the river and have additional parking area there. That's a, that's a, that's a lot bigger. So we'll be going through this process again, so we have to wait and see. We won't hear about that probably until the winter if we are successful. I know it's been taking time.
I know. I'm not buying a kayak quite yet.
But it's a good thing, development of park. You see community developing park. You have, Memphis has their city park right on the river. You have the Columbus County Park, plus the Columbus Township Park right off Rashia there. And I think China, aren't they developing a park there?
China has two or three parks now. East China has multiple parks.
And there's, there's a hope that there could be someday a river trail along Bell River, all over Memphis and Marion City, of course, with lots of obstacles and... And there's also talk about, there's a group looking in to connect the Bridge to Bay Trail there in St. Clair to McComb Orchard Trail, going down the additional road in Fredmore Highway, and that would complete the Coast to Coast Trail. So there's a group exploring various different grants on that, so...
Oh, God love them.
On the upside of the grant picture, we were able to obtain a park at unusually low cost of township, the land. We were able to purchase, purchase the land with the help of the Conservancy, which held the land until a grant came through, and that left enough money, we think, in the park fund to do something with the park and really, and maintain the park. Otherwise, we might not have the park at all. So there's been a push to apply for more funds, some of which you're supporting through your taxes from Michigan. If you check the box on your license, some of those funds hopefully will come to us and help us develop that park. So it's a mixed bag about these grants.
Yeah, when we got the park property, it was all basically like a fell into our lap, 18 acres. And what we did is, there's a group called Six River Conservancy. They help counties develop recreational spaces. They bought the property, got it off the market, held it in trust, and we applied for a DNR development grant. We were successful in getting that. We used those funds to buy the park off of Six River Conservancy, so...
And that left most of our park fund intact.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, the big thing, we have to match, do the match on these grants. But once it gets developed, the money from the county millage will be used for, to maintain the park and not wait until someone... And next month, I will send up a, I'll put on board here our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee ordinance and name, there's, I have a few residents that want to be on, but they won't officially name them to our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
And you'll have a liaison from the Township Board on that?
That's correct.
All right.
So, okay. All right. Okay, what are, what is the... Someone make a motion?
Does the, adopting the motion die for lack?
I'm not gonna move to adopt the motion. I'm not gonna be the one. I might second that motion. Make the motion. But does that mean if we don't have a motion and it isn't seconded and it isn't adopted, we don't have a clear... From what I've learned in my clerk's classes or whatever, you can make a motion. Just because you make a motion to put it, doesn't mean you have to vote for it.
Gotcha.
Well, in spite of my reservations on how this came about, if this young man sitting in the front row is to have any chance at all of kayaking on this river, I would put my faith at the moment in Tim Ward, who's a very record old man, and so is his company. And I will move to accept the bid for Phase One and Phase Two, the construction of the Casco Township Bell River Park.
Okay, we'll have, okay, we'll have, for the amount, the township amount will be, contribute will be $158,867.
I support the motion.
Okay, we have a motion for acceptance, the bid from Tom Wardenssons Incorporated for Phase One and Two construction, Casco Township Bell River Park. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, no.
Dean, yes.
Kaczynski, no.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, this is from Chris Russell, design proposal for a full set of plans for a hall and offices addition. Where we need a second ADA compliant voting precinct, plus the more expanded offices. So we had the architect who designed our, our addition back 10 years ago. We hired him to look at a, let's face it, we're off to the south here, looking onto the thing. And we had him, we worked with him. We, we kicked around some ideas and that, and we settled on the plan that's in the members' packet.
I have a couple comments. I'm a pot stir. I just want to throw out there that we do need a bigger place for voting. In November, we had two precincts. We had one precinct up here and one in the basement. And in order to be ADA compliant, we put the tabulator in the hall. So if anybody was handicapped, they could come in through the front offices and go that way. Otherwise, you could come up through the basement and go to the tabulator there. The ones up here, it's fine because we have the handicap right. There was a lot of confusion, and there was a couple residents who probably shouldn't have had one in the basement, you know, as far as like knee problems or whatever. So we need that. And then when we have the elections, we have to lock up the ballots. And right now, in our office that we share, there's no room to do that. And we need to lock up the tabulators. Everything needs to be secured, especially, you know, after 2020. There's all this stuff. And then in November 2022, we have the passing of proposal two, which entails a lot of extra things that probably the residents and most residents of the state don't know about, one of which is we are required to have nine days of early voting. We don't know right now how that is gonna be implemented. We're waiting to hear from the county clerk as far as possibly having a combined early voting center up in Port Huron, which at first I have reservations about because I don't think it's fair to ask our residents to travel up to Port Huron. However, the financial burden to have nine days of early voting for each municipality is, what did she say? Mary Clarkson, like $9,000 for each election, for election inspector, okay. That's just wages. That's just wages. That's for the early voting, and that's for each election. So next year, we have at least three elections, possibly four, because if we have like a school one in May or whatever, but we have the presidential primary in February or March, I'm not sure yet, and then the regular primary in August, and then the general election in November. So we have three. So we're talking, if we have to do early voting here, which if we have to, we have to. But as a board, you need to consider that our spending is gonna go through the roof for elections. And there's nothing we can do about it. It's part of the state constitution, and we just have to do what they...
Are we reimbursed at all in the state for these?
We are. They, one of the other things from proposal two is postage-paid absentee ballots. That is gonna be paid for by the state. So we don't have to pay for the return postage on ballots or the applications. That will be reimbursed by the state, for now. We don't know if that's gonna be a continued, because you know, the state's gonna do what they want anyway. So it could be, you know, yeah, we're gonna do it, and then in two years, oh, you know, we're not doing it. But we're responsible for it because it's part of the constitution now. So that's one of the main reasons why we need to do an expansion. However, because I can't do anything, you know, normal. I'm gonna throw a rant into our little plans because this morning I got an email from the county, and there is a grant that I can apply for, but it's due at the end of August, August 31st at 5:00 p.m. But it's for a community center. And we can, we can ask from a minimum of $150,000 to a maximum of $2.5 million. And it can include land. It's a grant, so you have to apply for it, so it doesn't mean we're gonna get approved. But then I'm thinking with the addition, is there a way we can kind of work that into... I don't know how we would do it because we're limited on space, but even if, I'm just throwing it out there as a, you know, wild card. What if we did a two-story addition? We put a community center in the base, or on the first floor, and on the second floor, we could do like extra offices or whatnot.
With an elevator?
Definitely an elevator.
With an elevator?
Well, yeah, because if the third office, the treasures office is upstairs, you need people to be able to go up there that, you know, handicap accessible. I'm just throwing it out there. You guys can tell me what you want to do. I mean, we can apply for it and see, see what happens. But I mean, it would be nice in the future to have a place for like, whatever, senior citizens, after-school activities. But I mean, it would be nice in the future to have a place for like, whatever, senior citizens, after-school activities, meals on meals, we could, we could sign up for that, you know.
Those who can't get down to the kayak launch.
Right.
Nice, wouldn't it?
Right, right. So.
Bus. Yeah. Oh, if we only had the land around the hall.
Right. Well, and it includes land, so I mean, you can make a proposal to there, 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 wherever. But that would be a good thing.
Smooth thought.
Well, I guess I have no problem looking into this, but if we put this on hold, any chance that we will have a?
Well, and that's the thing, is we need to have it for at least the general election next November. I know it's not going to be done for February, but, you know. And the more, the more like political.
No, I say a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. We have to get this built, so we have two areas for precincts, and you have areas for your office. We also are desperately out of room in the building department.
Absolutely. They're slashed.
The treasurer's office is fine. I like my windows, and it's a marvelous office. But I like the drawings of the plans. I can envision that. A separate entrance for assessing clerks, treasurer, leave the building department up here to deal with all their growing. I say we go forward with the CR design and.
Do you want me to even do anything with us?
Put in for it. We could always.
Yeah, let's explore.
Could always build up, I suppose.
Right. Well, yeah, because I'm thinking even if, because October 23rd, I think, is when they're supposed to have the, yeah, they're going to notify the winners on October 23rd. So, I mean.
And what do we have to do to prepare for this grant proposal?
It's a lot of paperwork.
A lot of paperwork.
It's going to be, yeah, yeah. I watched a webinar this morning. It was an hour, and there's a lot.
But while worth it.
I'll do it. I mean, if it gives us, I got four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, so I can get us more.
Yes. Well, as long as they're giving it away.
All right.
Might as well apply for it. But in the meantime,
Yeah.
let's get this hall set up for the elections that are just going to slam us.
Well, and there's more and more population in the township.
Yeah. I'm just worried about the number of workers you're going to be able to gather in. We'll have to put a big sign out front.
Well, we wound up having to go through the state and meeting people the last couple of elections because there wasn't enough people in the area.
Because of COVID too.
So a lot of people out of the township worked here.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
No, it's, no, it's fine. As long as they're willing to do it, and you've got nine days of voting.
Right. And I don't know if this is the right place in the, in the meeting to do it, but I wanted to address the audience here, and you guys can pass it along. I know there's a couple Facebook pages, and people were complaining that we don't rent the hall out. We do rent our hall out. Was it back in March, I think, we approved a hall rental. So if anybody's interested, we just take a deposit, and then there's a small rental fee just to pay for the setup and the breakdown. And we've already had two showers here, and they turned out great. So.
And I'll sign you up to help with elections. I'll sign up right now.
Oh, we, we got applications in our own.
Okay. Don't forget to give me one before I leave.
All right. Okay, the proposal, okay. This is from Chris Russell. The microfolds will provide construction drawings to Casco Township for proposed addition to existing building that I provide drawings of also in 2016. Based off all rate provided preliminary floor plan is five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Construction drawn will consist of a foundation plan, floor plan, wall section, elevation, and site plan. Finished materials will be specified by current employees of Casco Township and input vice Chris Russell Design Incorporated. payment breakdown will be one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We accept it. Proposal and remaining balance upon after completion and delivery of sets of six sets of finalized construction drawings. PDS will also be provided. Plans will be started within two weeks of it accepting proposal. Preliminary drawing will be provided for review and the design process onsite meetings discuss plans every two weeks if necessary. I look forward to hearing back from you after your August 8th report.
Question. Do you regret what the plans cost for the last expansion of all, by any chance? Does anybody?
No. What's the proposal for the addition?
And I do want to throw out there that we do have money left from the ARCA. I don't remember the exact amount, but it's over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
And we need to use it, otherwise I have to give it back to the federal government, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
We're going to use that.
And one of the main things is proposal pulling places.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's the main thing right now.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept CR Design's proposal. Is anyone aware of that? Proposal for full set of plans in the amount of fifty-seven fifty.
I support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the proposal from CR Design for a full set of building plans for five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes. I have a question. When this bid comes in and the construction bid goes out, that's put in the newspaper?
Yeah.
For competitive bids?
Right.
And does the main contractor have more of a say in this?
What do you mean?
He's overseeing the project, so he will be overlooking these bids as well, and we will be getting his feedback and advice.
You're talking about Chris?
Yes.
Architect? I don't think he's going to have any. He's just drawing up the designs. He's just the architect.
And then we will hire our contractor,
Yeah.
which will be a bid process.
Yes, and then they can.
But that does not have to be a lowest bid process.
Last time, how I recall, when we did the addition here, we hired our building official to be our.
I see. All right, I remember. Okay.
Yeah. Chris does good work, and I think it's going to be a good addition. And once we get that done, and the elections, well, hopefully we'll have it done for elections, we'll move temporary where the existing, and we'll just redo the floor plan and therefore the building department, and have a secure lobby, which we don't have right now. So that'll be a part of it. So, okay, all right.
Could you do motion carries on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just fudged up the question.
That's fine.
All right. Next one, high-tech quote for phone data line for the code enforcement officer. Last month, we had where high-tech thing, it was a permanent line. Since we're doing the addition, and our code enforcement officer will be up in the building department, we just want a simple drop just dangling from the seat so he can do his work in the meantime. And. And let's see.
So this is the bid for three hundred and thirteen dollars?
Yes.
And I make a motion to award high-tech the quote for a bid for a phone and data line for the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support to, for high-tech, for to install the line for the code enforcement officer for three hundred and thirteen dollars. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, on construction.
We deleted that.
Yeah, deleted that. Next one, budget amendment here. I put a budget lead thing. I request the board approve the move of five hundred dollars from account 101101-997, budget contingency account to general ledger 101101194, township official liability.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment, as stated. Support?
Okay, we have motion support to approve the budget amendment. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. I'm going to be doing this almost every month if it's.
Not almost.
Oh.
I agree.
So it doesn't snowball on us. So it's also, it's good when we vote. Okay. Next, next one. Okay. This one is the noxious weed ordinance. I'm sure that drew a lot of people in there.
My dear people,
Okay.
have you, I take it, read all the way through the noxious weed ordinance? This is.
It's overkill.
Oh, yes, overkill. If we took this ordinance out and stood by the bitches and read it, every noxious weed would drop over dead. This is overkill. This is not what the township intended. The township intended, I think. There are very few houses, there are very few residents in this township that are of light to their immediate neighbors. We were told, and it's probably very true, that one way to deal with the problem of the singular neighbor who appears to have abandoned his house or is living in over-the-porch grass squalor and garbage bags not being picked up by a trash company is to employ a noxious weed ordinance, which, if we go to court, a circuit court, gives the treasurer's office the ability to hire, gives the township the ability to hire a lawn maintenance to bring this grass back down to a level of human acceptance and puts the neighbors out of their misery. And then my office is able to put it on a tax bill.
If they don't pay it.
If they don't, if they don't take care of it in the, in the time. That is really all my intention was for this ordinance.
All right.
I agree.
Um, this ordinance is overkill.
How about, okay, my feeling is, how about let's explore other things?
Well, isn't, can't we just get like our blight? Isn't, does that cover?
Doesn't I think that it does? Why doesn't that?
It's not formally listed under blight, but we can.
Then maybe we just need to ban the white ordinance. Because this is.
Because we're only talking about extreme possibilities.
Because I mean, even just driving here in front of the farmer's fields, there's tall weeds in the ditch.
Well, yeah.
The corners of the mile. I was looking all the bushes.
All right.
For being violation of this.
This is overkill. We have to do something within the blight ordinance that says you are making your neighbors miserable.
Right.
Okay, let's, I mean, if we just, if we do nothing, it just.
We just table or post, we're going to postpone it. So you want to postpone it till next month?
Yeah.
But what are we going to do next?
I guess.
He's going to check into the blight, area to the blight.
Yeah.
Has anybody here read this ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Apparently it's very, it allows.
I would like to hear it.
Oh, it's long.
It allows someone, whoever, it allows this officer to go on anybody's property without.
Asking.
Well, I agree. I know.
Ten inches high.
We're not going to.
Those weeds can grow ten inches in a week.
This country is like over eighty percent zone agricultural now. Still, the population has not increased. It's decreased by about eight hundred since the last census. Forty-seven, four thousand seven hundred versus thirty-nine hundred and ninety-nine. So to me, that's one of the reasons it was overreached, because it's intrusive. It also creates problems between neighbors. It's another way for neighbors to fight with each other. But I do think we have to get blight under control, which we just hired an enforcement officer.
And he's doing an amazing job.
From what I hear, an amazing job. He's very, he's well-trained, well-educated, and aggressive about it, but in a good way. So to me, that's the way to address this, not sending a township agent onto somebody's property to see if they have weed sixteen feet or, or grass ten inches high. It doesn't even say near the building, just over ten inches high. So I'd like to see this approach, but in a much different manner.
So we want to postpone it for next month?
Well, postpone this guy. Yeah, until whenever the planning commission.
I think we need to put.
We're going to, we're going to flip this to the planning commission?
Yeah.
If they need to change the blight.
Oh, I see. I just want to know who wants to be weed commissioner.
We just, we just, we just postpone.
After this run of rain, almost everybody in the township hopes the ordinance. Because otherwise, it's even a catch.
That was not our intent.
This is not to say that there are clearly problems that we need to.
Let's say, listen to this. Well, we'll just postpone this. I'll send this back to the planning commission. We'll work on it for nine days.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Moving on. The next thing is the contract for King and King CPAs. King and King, they're our auditing firm. They do a very good job. We usually have our audits in June, like we did this past, a couple months ago. And we have a contract here. What, now, because of our population, we don't have to do an audit?
Right, we can do it every other year, which we talked about doing. We could have skipped this year, but since we just started BSNA at the beginning of last year, we wanted to make sure everything was up on the up and up. So they redid their contract proposal, and they said they could do, they called it a compilation every other year, and then the audit the next year.
Compilation, we basically send them everything, and they just do a quick check or something. Okay.
Something like that. They'll still file the paperwork that we need to file with the state every year, the.
The gas fee, whatever it is.
I don't know if we want to check into anybody else, or if you guys are, this is a five-year contract, so it's through 2020.
I'm comfortable. I think King and King do a good job. You have some reservations, at least on my part. Like I talked to Wes yesterday.
Well, one of my problems, and this is, this is going to be on TV, so Wes could be watching it, but one of my problems is when they do the budget adjustments at the end of the audit, they just come in and do them, and they don't explain. So like if I'm putting something in the wrong account number, I don't know it. They just fix it. So if they don't tell me, I'm going to continue to put whatever it was in that account. It would be nice if they would say, hey, you know, this should, the benefit of this account, this should be in this account.
Maybe we should just specify before they do the audits or accompany, hey, let us know, you know.
And I know coming has had reservations too with, you know, asking them questions and.
We could, we could check around if you would like.
Yes. It's always good to mean, how often do you check around for your car insurance, for your home insurance?
We need to do it, yeah. We need to do it.
Be wise.
Okay.
I would just like to explore one or two.
Okay.
And since we have that window of time that we don't have to do it every year, give me a little bit more time to. And there are a few firms that I would like to explore. Local people. I don't want anybody having to travel halfway across. Local people, I don't want anybody having to travel halfway across the state for us. And I thank King and King, they've been very diligent in what they do. The whole art of the audit has changed.
Yeah.
In the years I've been here.
Right.
Okay, I, I will get some of those things from you, and I'll call around, and I'll.
You'll call around.
Yep, we'll start exploring.
Do we wanna put that for next month on the agenda?
Sure. Okay, next thing is MTA professional development recruits.
I just put these in there, if anybody's interested in going.
I'd love to check, I may be interested.
I would be interested.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I think it'd be good for you, Gina. I was at the one in, up in Frankenmuth, it was a trustee's retreat just a couple years ago, and it was very good.
Yeah, cause this is both planning and so.
Yeah.
And, and trustee.
Yeah, trustees.
Well, yours is on the same, didn't see if you could.
I know, I know, cause you make some more. So, do we wanna, if anybody's interested, I don't know when the cutoff is, but the early bird special is like fifty, forty hours cheaper.
What's the early bird?
It doesn't say. Well, it says regular rate for fifteen per person within three weeks of the event. So I guess the three weeks, if it's before the three weeks, it's considered earlier.
Yeah, back October, third, fourth, September, or maybe beginning of September.
So are you interested in doing the treasurer's?
No. I'm looking down the list of classes that are offered. I don't like the one that says you're not the boss of anyone.
I think that's.
Well, when it comes to us, the boss are the residents, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'll think about it, it's not, is it during football season?
Yeah, I think it's good, any of one on the board would like to go, I think we oughta.
So should we just do that as an approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Okay, we need a motion on it?
So moved.
Okay, we have motion, we have support.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion support for, for us to pay for any of the officials. We'd like to go to the MTA, MTA development, I don't know where it's there. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, the next one is the cemetery fees.
So, we're actually going to a cemetery conference next week, and they're very informative. And we found out that we do not charge enough for our cemetery plots because we have to account for perpetual care to take care of the cemetery once all your plots are sold. You don't have any money coming in, but you still have to have someone cut the grass, snow removal, you know, whatever kind of maintenance and upkeep. So, I did some investigating, and eight hundred dollars was kinda middle of the road. There was some that were, like, what, I can't remember what we were charging, was it two fifty?
Two fifty, and then it was five hundred for two.
Right, which was low.
No, was it three hundred?
Uh, uh, two hundred or three hundred, whatever it was, but it was super low. Even, is it Tim from Young's funeral, yeah, he was like, wow, that's pretty cheap. And I'm like, yeah, I know, I'm redoing it with the.
I've been reading since nineteen seventy-five or so.
Right? So, this is just kinda what I threw out there, and then I talked to our cemetery care figure, he's the one that's opening and closing the graves for us. And so that's where I got the prices for the grave openings. He charges seven hundred, so he said to just add a little bit on for the perpetual care, so I put seven fifty.
Oh, I see.
So, but that's where I got those, and then it's an additional hundred dollars if it's in the wintertime, so between November fifteenth and April thirtieth, just because if there's snow or whatever, rust. Right, right. So, and we don't have any of this in place, I don't think.
Yeah.
And I'm actually working on a cemetery ordinance that will hopefully, I wanted to get it done for this one, but hopefully it'll be for next month.
Yeah, our, our clerk's office, they've been, they've been doing a great job in renovating both records in the physical grounds or.
That's good.
Our township's garden of stone, as they call cemetery.
How many do we have?
Just one cemetery.
Where is that?
Right Palm Road, right in Aier there, you'll see, it's on the east side.
It's kinda awesome.
Oh, the Aiers.
There's a sign there now.
Yep.
Oh, nice sign.
It's a Caskill Township cemetery, not the Aier Cemetery.
If you Google it on maps, it's Aier.
Cemetery in Aier.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I think that looks good about the pricing, so by the time we did that.
And I mean, if we need to adjust that later, we can.
Well, we did, I'm on the cemetery committee of that Saint Michael Cemetery in Richmond. We had to do the same thing about twenty, twenty-five years ago, had to up the rates and that, because of perpetual care.
Right.
Okay, all right, I need a motion to accept the cemetery fees.
So moved, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion to, a motion to accept, any approval?
Awesome, okay. No, you go ahead. Put out.
Okay, we have motion, approval, okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, all right, now, Brian Time Cemetery.
He's, this is the guy that came out and did the stump removal, what, a couple months ago? And then we had some trees taken down, but the stumps are still there. So he went back out there, and there's sixteen more stumps.
Of what?
Yeah. And then, I don't know if you guys read it, but he also said that there is a low spot in the front of the cemetery, and there is an excessive amount of mosquitoes, cause they're breeding in the water. So he said he could come in and spray for five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and it would be mosquito-free for a hundred and eighty days, which would cover the rest of the season. So maybe if we do that, like, every year, just in the beginning of the season or whatever.
Detroit, New York, or two, the low areas, right on there, second level.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, is that included in the?
That is not, that would be separate.
Okay. Okay, so, the big thing is getting the stumps out of there.
Yes. Yeah, it looks really good.
Yeah.
Thank you, you did a good job.
Okay, let's, a motion on this, I'll go for stump removal at least.
Make a motion to approve the stump removal for two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars in the cemetery.
Okay, we have a motion support for the stump removal for two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, all right, motion carries. Okay, we have another one, citizen comment here, if anyone would like to address the board on any thing.
Question, you had referred several times to Pam, Pam Blum, and what's her position?
Pam Blow, she's our professional park planner. We've employed her to go out, and she designed the park for us, and when we applied for grants, she's the one who puts them together. She's excellent, she's done parks around the country, I mean, around the state. She's done work for St. Clair County and McComb County.
And it's a D A L O?
E L O U G H.
Mayor Ben, I have recommended her to other communities, who are thinking about developing recreational.
So we're not doing a council anymore, like you had planned?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, next month I'll be introducing an ordinance for our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. This will be, post a five individual, four will be all residents, but one will be a board member. And they'll meet quarterly, and there's other things too. This past winter, I had lunch with Jeff White from Lennox EMS and some of the other supervisors, and we met with officials from the hospitals here, right there in ninety-four, twenty-six. And there's one of them, I forget who it was, said that we could apply for a grant through them, like, for park equipment, like playground equipment, stuff like that. So there's lots of opportunity if we look around, and that'll be for the advisory committee to help do that, to look into those opportunities to provide more amenities for the park. And I, earlier I said about that trail to, McComb Orchard to Bridge Bay Trail, and about water trail down to, from Memphis Marine City. Our, if both of those come to fruition, our park would be the place for both of them to meet. So, kinda, yeah, it'd be kinda interesting to talk and sell about. The, the trail from Richmond to St. Clair, you're applying to the Ralph Wilson Foundation. He was from the Rose Point area, he used to own the football team Buffalo Bills. Well, he, he's passed away, you know, but he set up a foundation, one of the big things is to provide money to communities through, like, the grant process or the endowment, to help develop, like, one of those trails. And.
Is that the reason why you chose to develop that piece of property first, other than, like, the property on Meisner?
Well, the big thing too, the, we don't have a full-time police department. Castle, we have the sheriff's department. I mean, if you, when they say full-time, that means they have a dedicated car in the thing. You call nine-one-one, the sheriff's department will meet you. I mean, I, I live on Sickler Highway, and I've had a couple accidents, and the sheriff patrol is there before anybody.
Yeah, they're pretty timely.
Yeah, so, what, when you have a park, you need to have it patrolled. What's nice about the place on Fronmore Highway, right across the road is an MDOT parking ride share. They patrol that, you know, a few times a day, and they told us they had no problem coming into our park, so. I wanna, I'm looking into, we're with Pam Blum, get a gate like they had at the Columbus County Park, so it opens at a certain time and that, so.
We can do when they have the pavilion where you could run out, like, the pavilion for parties? Will that be available?
We can't.
Okay.
Because we, because it's one of those passport numbers, we can't, we can't.
It's a passport, right.
It's a first home first serve.
Okay, that's.
Because we're accepting money from the passport on my cars, yeah.
Yeah, because I have the passport on my car just to.
Yeah, but it, I mean, you could still use it, it's just a first home first serve, and there's a rental or whatever.
Get there early and ask Dan.
We'll share.
All right, Ollie.
We have the vet, Sixth River Conservancy, and some was from University of Michigan, they're gonna be doing a bat countdown there on Friday, September fifteenth. They sent me the insurance today, their insurance. So they have one, they're gonna have a group of people, they go around counting the bat population.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so they're gonna.
Gonna help with the mosquito problem.
Maybe we could run those bats.
There's a baller to him.
Bad house over there.
So we, we have, like, um, and we've had help from other groups writing these grant, we had letters of support. One of them, the Friends of the St. Clair River, they do a phenomenal job, like, they'll, they do stuff like different fish counts, or different counts of various wildlife in the area and that. So, there's a lot of positive movement to developing this kind of recreational space, especially one that's devoted to nature like this one will.
Like you said, especially if it'd be a hub for both trails to meet, that would be one.
Yeah, but also, Joe, isn't it, because of the water, there's gonna, you're gonna be able to fish?
Yeah.
Is there maybe gonna be a kayak launch or something?
Yeah, there will be, there'll be like, we're planning like a seasonal kayak fishing dock, of course, in the winter it'll be pulled out, but yeah, it'll be there. The big thing is clearing Bell River, the big problem is with Bell River is most of the, it goes through private property.
So if they have a tree down and it's on their property.
Yeah, well, you can, the river's considered public access, but if you have to portage a dam, that's where you have to go on private property. Now, the Great Lakes, there's already been a Michigan Supreme Court ruling that it's public access from the edge of the water to the high water mark. So you could walk around the Great Lakes and not be trespassing on someone's property. They haven't made that determination yet for rivers. Matter of fact, I heard it from that question we asked a U of M law professor several years ago, I was up at a thing in Googles, and I, I asked him, what is the distance you're allowed on a, a stream or a river not to trespass it? He goes, I don't know. And one of the members said, do you think that needs to be determined in court? He goes, probably. So, but, yeah, that's the thing, so.
The other thing is it's really expensive to get the log jams out of the river.
Yeah.
Expensive and dangerous, but some of us hope that the Wilson Fund will start to look at water trails as well as just land trails. They have a lot of money, and they have some limits on when it has to be given, and I'm hoping it comes up to the wall and it's stuck out.
Okay.
So I do have the park benches, many of you here have helped either with collecting the benches for, or the caps for the benches for the park, or you've helped sort, and now is the time. I have to have these sorted and gone to be made, need everybody's help. It's this Saturday and Sunday from like eleven to seven at Jennifer Willard's house on Church, right off of Meisner. If you guys could come for a couple hours, bring your kids, your neighbors, your friends, your family. If everybody does a couple hours, we can knock it out, cause if, if it's not done this weekend, the caps, what's, all the caps are gonna have to go to a recycling center, cause I mean, I could probably fill half of this room with the caps that are totally controlling my barn.
So where, where on Church?
Um, I post, I posted it, it's Jennifer Willard. So, if you go Meisner to Church and you head west.
South of Church.
Oh, yes, you're right, right, south, and you head south, it's the very first house on the right.
Oh, okay.
And she's got two big party tents that she's gonna put up, and we'll have the table, banquet tables and all there, and we'll have a little assembly line and knock it out.
Right.
Maybe you could put her address on your Facebook postings, because.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know east and west, you didn't know.
I did, I'm from west. Okay, okay. Yeah, I absolutely will.
Well, we appreciate you every year making your intake.
Yeah, so I think there's enough for two benches. So, yeah, and then it'll just be, you know, you guys decide where you want it and whatever, but yeah, super cool.
What's the square footage of the proposed addition to the.
You know, I don't have that right here, we have the preliminary plan here, we'll have to look at it. I could get that information for you. He was supposed, I asked him to be here tonight, but he has a family event. Sir?
The paper that you have to post in for competitive bids.
That would be the voice.
Yeah.
Do you have something that states also digital posting? For those that follow in a digital format, instead of just a paper format?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I don't have the paper on that, because it's digital, but by law, I think all we have to do is. Yeah, by law, we just have to do it in paper. We usually put stuff on our Facebook and our website too.
Voice you can access online.
Yeah. I guess my informal question and a comment, when applying for the grants, are, are the grants being discussed among all the board members?
Yeah.
Cause it just, the discussion that was going on back and forth, it just seems like.
Yeah, we.
The board was, there were board members that were not aware of the stipulations of the grant, and what was required.
No, we, we, all the grants we applied for, I need board action in order to initiate them, yeah.
Then the second part to that is, the bids that come in, is there no review of each of the individual bids by the entire board? Is this not, are the bids not presented to the entire board?
I did not see.
How do we, how does a board member, or does this board decide, like, is the bid actually, does it fulfill all the requirements?
Well, first of all, we did have here the results of all the bids.
It was a summary.
Yeah, a summary. And according to the passport, like, earlier we talked about, according to the passport, we have to have this according to the V N R. If we didn't, we had to have compelling reason why we don't take, and it has to be well documented.
Right, right, so, and that, that was my, my point was, okay, so are these bids being reviewed to, so that all the board members are in agreement that, okay, there is no compelling reason why this bid should be rejected? Is there other outstanding reasons why?
Or, I mean, you had said also that a bid was placed, but. Or, I mean, you had said also that a bid was placed, but then it was revised and resubmitted.
Right, that bids can be, someone submits a bid until the cutoff date, which was in, um, was it July fourteenth?
It was Friday, it was one o'clock. I was sitting here, and we did have one member, and I opened the bids right then. It was up. And, um, so, up to that point, if someone bid and they wanted to revise their bid, they could.
Did you specify the terms for the bid, or did the contractor say this is what we're gonna do?
No, they based their bid on the construction drawing provided by the park planner.
On, on that, um, is there allowance for change orders or a, a maximum above the initial bid? So if they win at this amount, that they can somehow get in these change orders to creep the price up?
They have to complete the work on.
No, it's my concern too.
Okay.
They have to complete the work on what they've stated here.
There's no standard.
I have a question regarding the architects. Do you deal with just one architectural firm? Why aren't we going to, like, schools like Lawrence Tech or something? Or they would do it for free?
We took the one here, Chris Russell, he designed the, the addition we put in twenty sixteen. He did good work, made a good working relationship with them, so we had him.
Okay, so you don't, I felt it would be, you know, beneficial to the township. You would save money and it would give them, because it's an architect that's teaching the classes.
With those junior degrees, so they're backed up by T R Design, so it goes along their lives.
So, yeah, that's why.
Yeah, I used to be married to.
Well, that's why Chris Russell's son.
Sure, I'm sorry.
How does the board determine what requires a bid, such as general contractors for the park or whatever? And what aspects do not require a bid, such as Chris getting this job? What determines what is bid required and what isn't?
Well, I guess we could have, um, put the, uh, before there to say, um, I don't know totally, but, um.
It's just, I.
Well, I know, like, with, with the grants, you have to have more than one. Well, you would put it out there, only one person gets it, only one person bids it.
But in general. For any, any.
I mean, because of the grants.
That's fine.
Because Chris is, he's not.
No, he's not tied to the grant, but grants all aside, we've, we've hired people in the past before we even purchased the park property. And I just remember in past years, uh, that bids were required.
Okay, we're gonna be putting out later this week a bid for snow removal. We're gonna be working on, gonna put that out, you know, there's bits for that.
No, I'm not questioning why you do what, or, just the what, if there is a standard.
Like, is there a dollar amount? The township is going to be spending this much money on an architectural job, or, um, snow removal, or mosquito abatement, or, or, or whatever. Is there a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars before it has to be bid?
Well, I agree.
Rather than just, we know a guy to be hired.
We do see a guy who's right.
Hold on, hey, folks.
This is an issue that's come up a lot of times, and I've always advocated that the township needs to have a clear and well-defined bid process, both in terms of numbers, in terms of qualifications, in terms of workers' comp insurance, and other liability coverages that we need for anybody who's gonna work for the township as a contractor. We have not had this yet. I think at the time is past that we should have had this. And I'm just urging that we consider doing that.
I think I read, and maybe it was the MTA book or something, and I, I could be wrong, but I wanna say that the threshold was like twenty thousand or something. If it's over twenty thousand, then we have to get, if it's under, then it's our discretion. I don't.
Has, has. Put that out in their magazines numerous times in a financial forum, and I think you're right.
And I think that the MTA does have a lot of information to help us put something together. There's been a, kind of a reluctance until lately to do a lot of these things. A lot of these things are happening in the country. There's a lot of education and a lot of changes, and it's just wonderful.
Yeah, in the last two years, we have, a lot of our processes, the building, and we've bid a lot of up here, a lot, probably some that have not been done in multiple decades, so, um, which was sort of, I mean, the cemetery, the renovation of the hall, the new software, um, for the clerks, build apartment treasures that help us with our operations.
Or new landscaping, new lawn service, new.
All kinds of.
New all sorts of stuff, all new style now.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or that? Okay, the board members?
I, I do have a question, slash comment. Um, for the Parks and Rec Committee that you're doing, um, are we, like, putting that out there? Anybody who's interested?
Yeah, I've, I've, I've had several people contact.
Should we put it on, like, our Facebook and website, just so?
Sure.
I was gonna say, how do you go about being assigned to that committee?
Well, we'll discuss that the next meeting. I've had several people already express interest. Yeah, some very well qualified in that.
I think you have your board person that wants to be on there.
Okay.
That would be.
Okay.
But, I'll just add it on.
Yeah, well, okay, um.
I just have to say that were it not for the COVID money that we have received from the state, none of this would be possible. None of this would have been done.
And it came at a good time because the state's.
Because we're expanding.
Yeah, we, I mean, other than the passport grant, yeah, the renovations we're doing here because of COVID money and all that.
But that being said.
Okay.
We don't often disagree. We don't often have a split vote. We don't. I appreciate your concerns on this park, and were it not for the fact that at some point we have to move forward in this. But we have to move forward with more watchful eyes, as far as I'm concerned. I, I appreciate the state. I do. I don't, I never appreciate having decisions removed from this board table. I don't. I know that's part and parcel of how you play the game. I'm just not very good at that game. But I trust that eyes will be upon these things. I trust that we have hired a good contractor. And I, we have to trust the process and get a park together for these people that have been paying on a millage for years. And we have to have something to show for it sooner or later. That being said, we need to get somebody out to that park before Sunday to brush hog the entire front.
Yeah, we have a volunteer.
Good.
Yeah, we have a maintenance man clear around the signs.
Yeah, I saw that, but I was out there today, and those weeds.
I, I.
Notches.
They're notches.
Notches.
I had a call from somebody that, well, something's, okay, um, a few things here. The Church Road Bridge there between St. Clair Highway Division is scheduled to be completed by September, uh, twelve. I'm in contact with the director of Tachia Richmond Schools, so they can adjust their bus schedules. Next month, I talked to, um, the board here about the, after the, our match grant for the road commissioner here, I gave a few things here to look at. China Township is applying for a, a tire recycling grant. It's gonna involve four town, it's gonna involve China, Casco, St. Clair East, China, and Cochranville Township, and if we're successful in getting it, we'll, Supervisor John Gollum, China, then we'll have a few airline dumpsters where people can bring tires and dispose of them.
Nice.
Yeah, so, and he said, yeah, we need to put one in your park a lot, and I said, no problem.
A lot of recycling stuff.
Oh, yes. We looked at that.
I need to go to waste.
If we pull a couple of dozen tires out of the ditch, should we call you at the county?
What's that?
I said, if we pull a couple of dozen tires out of the ditch, should we call you at the county?
Well, if we have a dumpster here, and, you know, they, if we don't, then you have to call the county out there, so it's good.
Well, I think it's a great idea, because there's a lot of, well, I'm leasing consumer energy property behind me, and people prior to me, twenty years ago, put up a giant mountain of tires.
Wow.
As a backstop for shooting, and they left it on consumer energy. Well, now that I leased the property, consumer energy says, oh, we're not getting rid of that. You're gonna have to get rid of them.
Oh, wow.
So I got a mountain of tires.
And the last thing is, um, the Northeast Macomb Cable Consortium, we've been looking at, we've been looking, and we have to, we're having a meeting on August thirty with all the supervisors and mayors involved in the area, but we have to look at the recent subscriber fees for that. And, um, the reason why, they haven't been raised in a while, like, everything's gone up, and the studio in Armada is basically going broke. And they do a good job, televise our meeting.
It's because we pay Anita too much.
Yeah. They, they televise some meetings of the local communities, also sports programs, graduation, other community events, like, and right now up in Armada, they're doing the concert, the park, you know.
Right.
So, yeah, like everything, price costs have gone up, and so, um, we have to determine that, so. Okay, I have nothing else. Uh, we're up to a chair.
I make a motion to a chair. I'll surprise.
Okay, motion to a chair. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We like to see people in our audience.